All right, I think we can get started. I call the meeting to order. This is December 1st, 2022 for the Bloomfield Hills School Board of Education. Howard, could we have attendance, please?
We have four board members in attendance. We are missing Jennifer, Michelle, and John.
Thank you, Howard. So I'd like to move that the Board of Education convene a closed session in accordance with MCL 15.268, Section 8, to discuss the 2022 evaluation of the superintendent.
Second.
So roll call vote is required. So if you could mention your name.
Yes.
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 All right.
So we'll be going to closed session and then reconvening at what time, sir?
We will reconvene at 6:30 PM.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Reconvene the study session, December 1st, 2022. Trustee Mallow, could you take his attendance once more?
Yes, all board members are present except Mrs. Southward.
All right. And let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four is public comment. We don't have any today. We'll move on to five, which is our study session materials. A, international academy tuition and budget updates with Ms. Kostick.
So we show very consistent with prior years. At this time of year, we come to the board in a study session or committee format to address any questions you might have with what was provided. Similar to past years, what is provided is an update on this year's budget for the International Academy Oakma campus. As you know, it's a separate fund and we're the fiscal agent. And then also a preliminary budget for next year in order to calculate the tuition for next year, which must be provided to all participating districts by December 10th. So those documents are provided to address any questions that you may have. And then just so you know, as I put in the board update, the December revisions will come to you, that this year's budget revisions will come to you on December 15th for approval.
Sorry, Tina, so the mid-year budget is going to come in December, not in January? In February, when we normally get it?
For the IA Oakma campus fund, we've done it in December because of that December 10th deadline.
Gotcha.
Did anyone have any questions about the documents in the shared folder?
Just a point of clarification that, you know, going back to previous discussions, the tuition that we've set were maxed at 110%, right?
That is correct.
And so even such, it doesn't address the sustainability of IA's operating budget, or does it? Like from a more global perspective?
Every year is different, but I would say that we continue to proceed with caution. We were very pleased, as Lynn Gibson is here as well and works very closely with myself and the finance team, to look at this year's update, that even with an enrollment decline, there were savings in other areas. A lot of that from staff turnover, experienced staff that left, and then newer staff coming in, as well as savings from vacancies. At least while the position was vacant, there were some savings to be gained. So when you look at that bottom line in your packet, the original budget for this year showed a surplus of about $146,000, and now we're looking at something not too different, which is $124,000. And that does include the, an estimate for the negotiations that were going on that will also be coming to you with a board update next time from the Assistant Superintendent of HR.
So Tina, you just talked about the enrollment decline. I think the building, we typically have around 600 students.
600 has recently been the enrollment that we've been looking at, and this year, the fall enrollment is 587, unless that changed in the past few weeks. Okay.
Are there any people on waiting lists, or we just have less people interested in going to IA?
There are people on the waiting list, but we've done what we can for the, I mean, Rochester has the most on their waiting list, but they're not going through it. They don't have people dropping. So we can't, we can't fill those ninth grade seats unless people drop.
I'm sorry, how does that work? So we have the different districts that have their allotted seats, and we're saying that we have 587 out of 600, so there's 13 spots available.
And I think the building can handle even higher than that.
It's confusing, like what that means.
Optimally, it's more. It's 155 per grade, and so the 587 is not 155 per grade because we've had some attrition. And so the current letter of understanding states that districts only have to fill their seats through the first semester of ninth grade. So sometimes when students drop at the end of ninth grade, we have an opening for the 10th grade, and they don't fill those, so that's one issue. And then this year, there were other districts who just didn't fill all of their seats. Even though Rochester picked up seven seats, there were still some others that needed.
And that's fairly normal, I guess, that, I mean, the 587 is a fairly regular number?
No, we've been up to 620. That's what we've been operating under, except for like once COVID, the year before COVID. And then we started to have a decline there, but typically 620 is what we were looking at.
Which is 155 times four.
So, sorry, did you say Rochester has, they have 32 seats a year now instead of 25?
No, Rochester has 30.
30, okay. When you say they picked up seven seats.
25, sorry.
Okay, so.
This year, they were willing to take on more seats. So like, so let's say Berkeley didn't take all their seats, we can say we have five empty seats that are going to take it. Is there any district that would like to take on more seats for just this year?
Okay.
And it'll take on those seats.
But, but once attrition happens in, say, the end of ninth grade, say it's a Rochester student who goes back to their high school, that seat can only be filled by Rochester? Is that how it works, or could it be doled out to a different district?
Oh, I'd be happy to dole it out.
Okay.
But I don't think other districts would be willing to pick it up.
Okay, so.
Why wouldn't, if they've got a waiting list, do they have waiting lists? I'm sorry?
If they lose the FTE, that's like, that's it to the IA. So that money goes with the students to the IA. So if you are Berkeley and you don't have the whole hard money, you're not going to pick up another seat just so your ticket go to the IA.
So what is the freshman class?
So this is really about funding for the individual districts and not about the students wanting to get a better education, or at least a different IB education?
This is about the consortium agreement.
Oh, so these could be changed based upon changing the consortium agreement?
If people are willing to make that change, which is not likely.
Okay, so right now, the way it's written, it forbids, like, change, you know, sharing of backfilling positions between districts, is that right?
If a district doesn't need all of their seats, then it goes into a pool and the other districts can take the extra seats.
For the beginning, for start of ninth grade. I'm talking about after that, when people leave.
They could do it. It's ultimately always a district decision. If we have room, we always say yes. I don't think I've ever said no, but districts typically will not send during the 10th grade year.
Or beyond.
Or beyond.
So, yeah, so there's no incentive to send anyone beyond because of the loss of the FTE. What does the freshman class look like? Do we have 155?
Uh, we have, whoo, give me one moment. I want to be exact.
The seats don't generally open for freshmen because they'll be grabbed quickly. It's the 10th and 11th to 12th.
Of course, I mean, in a program that's rigorous, I expect some kids to choose not to come back, right? So, and I don't expect a child to want to leave their high school experience midway down the stream. And so I understand that there's going to be attrition and that districts don't want, I'm just asking, are we full in our freshman class this year? That was my question.
We have 151 out of 155 seats.
And Lynn, a few, at some previous meeting, you said that we used to balloon ninth grade. Could that be done again to try to get the numbers up through the four years? Take more than 155 for ninth grade?
Anticipate there's going to be some shrinkage going out, so you get down to 155.
Could that, is that consistent with the consortium agreement?
Ultimately, it's a district decision, so a district can always send more if there's room. The only time we really use the verbiage of the letter of understanding is when a district doesn't want to do something, and we say, well, we can, according to the consortium agreement, we can fill through the first semester.
Because that would require saying, okay, Berkeley, now instead of five freshmen, you can send us six or seven, right? Would they, would they do that?
Well, Berkeley has 10 seats, and they never fill their 10 seats.
Okay.
But they have to pay for 10 seats.
No. That's why, that's why I always send out the email begging for districts to take the seats, because they're not required to pay for those seats.
Maybe we can amend the consortium agreement for at least that.
And I would, I think that would be great, and that would certainly question, put into question a district's commitment to the IA if that should occur.
And then my only other question was the 2024 tuition, it looked like it was about $110 more, or more, how was that calculated, Tina?
So the consortium agreement allows no more than 110% of the foundation allowance. We don't know the state's budget for next year, and we don't know the foundation allowance. So it's based on an estimate, and we are estimating a $100 increase in the foundation next year, which actually is very conservative, but we'd rather build next year's preliminary budget on a conservative number. And so that target foundation is 9,250, and then you multiply it by 110%, and that's how we come up with the 10,175. So sending districts, just so you know, they don't lose the FTE. The FTE is actually counted in the resident district, but what they're losing is that foundation allowance plus 10% more, because that's how the tuition's being calculated.
So one of the things, just looking at the expenses, I know we've talked about this, is the rent. We charged, so the rent was $394 in 2022, which probably isn't even fair market value. The rent in the estimate is 310, where'd we come up with 310,000? We just put in $3 million into the roof, so I'm just saying, why is rent gone down?
The 394,000 is the last year of the old lease, which represented a $100,000 of base rent, and then the final repayment to the district for renovations from decades ago. So the 310,000 is the newly established based on educational rental rates, which we're using the same that the county center programs used. That's how it was established.
You got it.
So Tina, if we could suggest amendments to the consortium agreement, would one of them be to shift the year? I mean, it's too difficult to set tuition mid-academic here. Shouldn't we be consistent? I know we've been talking about this before, but, you know, if we're going to go back and suggest at least amendments, if now is the time to do that, would that be ideally one of the ones you would suggest?
Given the length of time it took to get through the last amendment and the first amendment, in all honesty, all districts, remember, we have 10 districts, including Bloomfield at the Oakma campus, so all would have to agree on all of them. So it would be wonderful, as Lynn stated, to say, you must pay for all of the seats that you're allocating. I don't know what the outcome would be. I'm not sure that all districts would agree in order to pass another amendment.
Tina, you incorporated a $100 tuition increase, or not, foundation allowance increase, and granted, this is anticipating what the 2020, the budget that's not going to be approved by the state until the fall or the summer of next year.
It could be June, yes.
Could be June. Two, I mean, yes, you're saying it's conservative. I think it's ultra-conservative in that, one, you know, it's about a 1% increase, and inflation is running around, you know, 7, 8, 9%, number one. And then number two, and then number two is, I'm assuming you put these numbers together sometime in October, prior to the Michigan House and Michigan Senate being, having a majority Democratic in January of this coming year.
We began the process then, but actually, we didn't finalize and hold our meeting with all the business officials till after the election. So yes, I agree, you could say it's ultra-conservative. I'd rather build the budget there and make sure that we plan that way, so we don't end up in a deficit. But my hope is also, based on everything that you said, it will be greater than that. And if we hear anything that looks really optimistic, we still have another chance before we give all of the districts a budget for next year to officially approve by every single board for next year. And we can always change that by March, so, if we hear anything that sounds more certain.
Thank you.
So I guess just building on Lisa's point, I would respectfully request and cheerlead, like any creative effort to boost enrollment, because, you know, obviously, I understand it's a conflict of financial interests for districts, but, you know, we know that there's tiers every year with kids and parents. I just learned of a friend of a friend, where my daughter's at college, they rented a second domicile in Berkeley just to get their kid into IA, which she did and graduated last year. So like the lengths families will go to, to attend this school are monumental, and so there's a mismatch there that hopefully we could figure out. My head pops off every time I try to figure out how.
I love that there's something in the consortium agreement that said, if you weren't going to use your seats, you had to let the rest of the districts know by a certain date. And whether Berkeley wants to hold on to them or not, they can't.
No, they don't, they don't, they don't hold on to them. I mean, as soon as I know that they're not filling their seats, I send the email to the superintendents. So they know that there are openings. It's not as if there is a date on that in particular.
But you're saying the other districts are not chomping at the bit to send their students up to the IA over and above their quota?
Not even the ones that have a waitlist?
Correct.
Right, so those, I guess.
Do the parents realize that there's opportunity, that there's basically 40 seats available?
The district has to release the student? They don't have the opportunity for us to say, hey, the seat's available, you can come?
Well, we go through our waitlist. So Berkeley might have, let's say they have 20 students who apply, and they only end up, they exhaust their waitlist, and they only have seven who come. And so that leaves three left. It's not that they're not trying to fill them, it's just that they don't have that, the number of applicants in their district. And so to, we, this year, really revved up our marketing, and we have students and staff, myself included, going to all of the middle schools that are allowing us to come in. There are a couple of districts who have been just kind of ghosting us a little bit, but for the most part, we've been able to go to Waterford, Clausen. We had 10 kids who went to the Clausen one, which was fantastic, because sometimes we don't get that many to apply. And so we have really done a great job trying to send information to districts. I know that Bloomfield Hills, the counselors have been outstanding with talking with students and promoting it. So we're trying, we're trying really hard. I tried to get another enrollment night at one of our consortium districts, at their high school, to add one, and there was a little bit of a conflict with trying to recruit their kids to the IA. And so I understand it. It's just the way it is.
Well, I think that's what, I think I'm trying to understand, is it, the fact that we are 33 students down from the max, is that because there isn't the interest amongst the parents and the students? Or is that because the administration in the different districts are holding it back?
She's telling you, she's getting iced out of these meetings.
Well, no, it's two, it's two. One is the initial freshman class not included by districts, so yes, that is an indication of not interest by families or students.
Okay.
And then secondarily, when we have those extra spaces, like an extra Berkeley three spots, is the reluctance of other districts to give up more of their children to that program.
Right.
I think it's also fair to say, much as this year, we also had a large graduating class last year that graduated and moved out, that is the same in every district out there. Every student that is out there right now in high school, every high school wants to hang on to.
Right, so my question.
So there's not a surplus of children.
It's yes and yes. It's both.
Yes, yes.
It's both the.
It's a lack of interest as a freshman, and it's also, depending on where we are, and/or just that Berkeley might not have. I mean, like, if 10% of their kids always apply, and their class is small, that means less than, like, that could be less than their 10 seats.
Because if it's a ninth grade marketing, or an eighth grade, ninth grade marketing issue, that's something you guys are working on. But if it's the holding on to the students in 10th and beyond, that's something we can talk about as part of the consortium agreement.
My question is, you, there's like this language of holding on to the students, there's no choice for the student? You know what I mean? Like, you're on a waitlist.
You're asking, you're putting me in, that's a really tough question to ask me at the seat when I am following a consortium agreement.
No, no, that's what I mean. So the district has to release the student to us. That's my question.
They're not releasing the student, they're saying, yes, the student can attend, which means the funds that go to that student, that go to the tuition now go to the IA.
Essentially, that's.
Well, let's be careful, it's not releasing, but you are saying, yes, I'm willing to let the tuition leave my building and go with the students.
But they have one less student to teach.
That was my question.
It is releasing, basically. And the other part of it that's interesting, not to cut you off, but that the IA doesn't exist in and of itself. It can't grant a diploma without the district also grant, so it's a ceremonial diploma that students get from the IA, but their graduation diploma comes from their own district. So, I mean, it is a release, basically.
Well, it says, it says the International Academy and every board president and superintendent, and I sign it. So it is coming from the district as well as the IA.
So at the end of the day, one of the major pinch points is, once we get done with the freshman year of 151 students, if X amount don't come back, how do we backfill them? And then after sophomore year, if four students don't come back, how do we backfill them? That's the challenge.
Yep. I mean, if a student, if a parent wants to send a child to charter school, the district doesn't have any choice. They, you know, the parent is allowed to, with schools of choice, go to a charter school or go to school of choice. But in this situation, in the, you know, as you said, Pat, for 10th, 11th, 12th, there seemed to be a reluctance for the district to allow parents to send their child to backfill the openings.
Well, and the consortium agreement is not written to address that. So it's not fair, in my opinion, to say to districts, why aren't you doing that? Because they've been operating with fidelity based on what the consortium agreement states.
But that's what I'm saying. It's up to working with us, the board, and the lawyers and the other districts to look at those provisions of the consortium agreement, so that these kind of things don't, you know, happen in the future.
Well, the budget looks good. Thanks, Tina.
I do have questions on the cost side. So I'm looking through the categories down here. Counseling, I see a number of 107, 047, about halfway down the first page, right? So I presume that's one counselor for all 600 students, right?
We have two counselors and a social, well, a social emotional educator who also has her social work, so I'm not sure where.
And the benchmark is around 300 students, well, one counselor to 300, so two is about right.
So my question is really, how many counselors do we have relative to, let's say, PHHS? I mean, per, how many counselors for X of hundreds of students?
So there are about 300 students per counselor.
Okay, all right, fair enough, thank you.
And I think PHHS, we just looked at it last time, is about 260 or 70?
All right, thank you. That was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll close that item, move on to.
Well, I, sorry, one last.
Oh, sorry, Lisa.
We have to, we have to, you have to let them know by the 10th, so we have to decide tonight if there's any problems with it, because by the 10th is when you set the, December 10th is when you set tuition. So we don't have another meeting before that. So if we have problems with, and there's nothing you can do, really, because you're maxed out according to the consortium agreement, so we don't have a lot of room to weigh in here.
No.
Unless we change the funding structure altogether, but then that would require us to modify the consortium agreement.
Right, and there is, there is no board approval required to establish the tuition.
Yeah.
So it is something, just because it is based on estimates. So even this year's tuition that was shared by last December 10th has changed based on the final state budget, the final foundation allowance, and that was updated this year. And so we're in the same, because it's based on assumptions, there is no board action. The board action, however, as fiscal agent, will be to approve the updated budget only for this year at the December 15th, because we went through and did that update.
I'm just going to say this, because I have, like, this much time left. If we don't come up with a better funding structure, I mean, we get all of the complaints about the buildings, we get all the complaints about the inequity in teacher salaries, and we have, our hands are tied because we're raising the maximum amount we can.
If we don't come up with a better system than this, and talk about how long it's taken, yeah, because that, we started working on this before I got on the board. So I really hate having to give people the answer that there's nothing we can do about it, but that is the only answer that there is left. And it really does, you know, you listen to so many articulate, well-reasoned arguments about why we should, and it comes back to funding and this consortium agreement. So, you know, two.
Nothing we can do, nothing we can do under the current constraint of the consortium.
Oh, the consortium agreement, correct, correct.
Which means that.
And we, as one district, can't change a contract that is, we're one of 13 districts that are part of it. We can try.
We can start the ball rolling.
Yeah, I mean, but it's going to require, so anyway, I hope that's one of the things that, you know, because I think we've made strides. We did get an amendment to the consortium agreement, so it's better than it was, a little bit, but I hope that that remains a goal of the, because, you know, and you have a culture at the IA, my kids didn't go there, I wish at least one of them had, but you have a culture of making do. And I'm not saying it's bad for kids to learn that, but, I mean, talk about equity in the district. Those kids are making do with a lot less than they would get in their home districts and in Bloomfield. And other districts start pointing the finger at us, expecting us to absorb the cost.
I mean, a lot less in terms of brick and mortar, but I think in terms of instruction, I don't think they are getting a lot less.
They're getting a lot less in terms of bricks and mortar and equipment.
And teacher salary.
Resources and teacher salary.
And certain opportunities.
And opportunities.
Like Morgan couldn't do theater at all, you know, pretty much the way she wanted to.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
I just would like to add that we appreciate the upgrades that we have been given. We don't need a lot. There are things that can certainly enhance instruction. Part of who we are is also that we are a little bit humble, and I would like to remain that way and certainly support the students in whatever way we can. So I think that it's a fine balance, and if we focus on the right things for the right reasons, I'll take Tina's terminology, I think that, you know, we can continue to make great strides. And I appreciate, especially the last couple of years, the support that we've been given, because it's made a huge, huge difference with morale, with staff, with students, with parents, and they'll be really excited about the furniture coming in December, but I haven't really brought it back to the forefront, because I still am waiting for that final walkthrough before I say, this is it. So I just am thankful for the support and for the creative thinking. thinking that goes on to try and make the IA even a better place.
Yeah, and I, I'll just still throw out there that increasing the size of that ninth grade class may be the shortest straight line or the lowest hanging fruit maximizing enrollment for now, if, if there's any way to do it.
When does that decision get made for the class of, or for the 23, 24 class in terms of how big that freshman class is?
Well, the capacity right now is, you know, identified as 155 for each incoming group.
But you've got 155 is, I mean, 10 through 12 is not 155. So what Jennifer is saying is can't we possibly increase the freshman class in anticipation of it declining over the few years as people leave?
Sure. I think that that would be a decision that would be made once we know whether districts have filled their seats.
Are you saying we as the IA or we as Bloomfield Hills?
Who makes that decision in terms of what that max number is for the freshman class?
It's based upon the shares that they are, have invested into the consortium. So every share that a district has in the consortium equals five seats in the freshman class.
But we have had enrollment that has been beyond 155 for any, for the ninth grade class, for the 10th grade class because of sibling preference, because of continuity of curriculum students. So we do have the capacity to have more than 155 students per grade, but we do need to be patient and wait to see what the actual enrollment is with each grade before. I, I'm happy to take, I've never said no to a district, not once.
To, to what Jennifer is asking, I mean, is it, can it be done to have a, a number of 160 or 170 as opposed to 155 for the freshman class?
We just did that two years ago with Bloomfield Hills. We had 14 siblings above the third, above our 30 seats. So we accepted 44 freshmen, but not all 44 freshmen stayed.
But those are for siblings that I'm just talking about.
I, I, like, I, I hear what you're saying. I think what I'm trying to say back is you're asking us to make a unilateral decision when there's a governing board in the consortium agreement where if a district comes to Lynn.
The consortium agreement. It's really constrained by the consortium agreement.
Well, it's constrained by the, the shares. So that's, that's the consortium agreement. So what is Lynn is saying is if a district comes to her and says, hey, will you take five more of our kids, 10 more of our kids? Of course we will, but we can't sit here at this table and turn around and say, we're going to make this big class bigger. We're not saying that we're keeping it at 155. We're going by with the shares.
But the share, but the, if the demand, if the number of parents and eighth graders in a certain district are greater than the number of shares, the kids go on a waiting list and it goes through a lottery, right?
Yes.
That's also going to be up to the district, right? So District A has 10 seats and they have 80 kids that apply. Once those 10 are already in, if Lynn sends out an email saying, hey, we have 15 additional seats we'd like to have students for, District A, you've used all 10. I noticed you have 70 on your waiting list. Do you want to send, you know, an additional 1 through 10?
Right.
Then you get a response and whatever that response is.
So whatever the superintendent says as a response, that's the answer. It's not up to the parents saying, I want to come to the, to IA.
A lot of time resides at the building level. So a lot of time that decision is made at the building level.
At the, or at the building, it's through the administration in one way, shape, or form. It's not a choice of the parent.
Lynn also has to balance how large to make the freshman class because they're all going to be scheduled with the same teachers. So we want to be cognizant of class size as well.
Granted.
So I think, I think we all know what the dilemma is. I think we all know that there's potential solutions. We've had conversations about some things. And I think as we move forward, things will kind of go in a direction that, that is beneficial.
Thank you very much.
Let's move on to the 5B, which is Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion Program Update. Margaret? We have it.
Have it. Yep, I'm writing for a question.
I have a question at the end of, of the document. One of the items was, at the very end is diversity of our employees and hiring data. And then there was a link in there for that.
Oh, does it not?
It links to some staffing information. I'm just wondering how, how to read that.
That's fair. Yeah, let me open it. I'll explain it.
Yeah, so the column on the left is all like, oh, I'm trying to remember because Keith did this for me, so he explained it to me. Oh, it was the like number of people. So like if you see a number there, that's how many people we've hired. And, and the A, B, C, I R are different codes, different races and ethnicities. And I can tell you what, what they are if you want. I have an, I have an email with that. And then the second col, like the second section is just what percentage of hires that were per year. And then we separated it for certified staff and non-certified staff based on race specifically. So C would be white and then non-C is any employee that's non-white.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry. I have no idea what you're referring to.
Oh, so if you go into the, the shared folder.
Right.
Five B.
Right.
You go all the way down to the bottom of that document. And I looked through it and I, it's great, thanks. But I got to that and I was like, oh, that's interesting. Let me see. It says, so link to new hire data.
Got it.
And then the data is there. I just couldn't understand.
Yeah, totally. I had, I had asked about it too. So yeah.
So, so just in summary, are the numbers moving or are we laying the groundwork for movement? Like where, where are we at?
Yeah, so I think we're, particularly our non-certified staff, we're, we're really in a good place. Our certified staff, we still have work to do. And obviously, you know, we're seeing dwindling pools just across the board in general of who's applying for all positions, particularly certified positions. And so we have work to do. We've had some good years and some, some that we would have liked to see a more diverse pool and more diverse hiring.
Like I said, this, the, the entire document's great. For this one, this part, if there could be like a relationship to the student population so that we know, like, are we, you know, so that we kind of know, like, are we.
Somewhere.
Do we have representation that's somewhat equal to that?
Like, I can tell you that we're 70, like, we teeter around 70% white in, in terms of our student population and our 30% non-white is pretty diverse. So that was why we pulled those numbers to look specifically at white and, and students and employees of color because, because it's our 30% of student population is really diverse. But I can, I can get that to you. It's a pretty easy thing for me to pull.
And could you send us like what these letters are?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I can also tell you, but if you don't want to, like.
Yeah, you can tell, you can tell us.
Yeah, I have it right here. And I meant to throw it in there and I just forgot. So A stands for American Indian Alaska Native, B stands for Black Non-Hispanic, C Caucasian Non-Hispanic, I, and I'm going too fast, sorry, Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, R stands for Asian, and S is Hispanic. And those are just based on the state reporting.
And keep in mind, we've hired also diverse candidates, but they're not going to fit into the box that you would put in on the census, right? So if you're Middle Eastern and you might be marked in the census, that's Caucasian, but it's still a diverse hire within our school district. So keep that in mind as well.
It's, that's something we've talked about a lot because obviously the only thing that we're sending in is race and that's also self-identified. And so there are other, of course, other aspects of diversity we look at as well that can't necessarily be put into a chart.
I don't know. The data seems off for 2021 for non-certified. Yeah, they just don't add up, but, so yeah, there may be a math error there.
For 2021 non-certified?
Yep.
Why?
No.
No, that adds up to 100. 70.34 plus 29.66.
Oh, you're looking at the non-certified, the, the actual breakdown?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, there definitely is a mistake there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was looking at the third column. Yeah.
Yeah, column K.
There must be some sort of calculation. He must have done something wrong. I'll, I'll fix it at some point. That's definitely not right.
What are we doing to, especially for certified staff, to expand? I, I know that we're using a new applicant, applicant tool, which I think will be helpful, but where are we, how are we expanding recruiting so that we can touch different areas and draw interest from more diverse candidates?
Yeah, so we, this kind of started during COVID. If you remember, we had reached out to Vanderbilt University, Indiana, University of North Carolina, Kimberly had that up. I think Ball State was another one. And we had candidates that were like pre-student teaching online during COVID shutdown. We're also, because a lot of schools are using something called Handshake, so we'll also share this information with some HBCUs and other universities to post just so that job is available. So when it goes out via Handshake at the universities that use it, it goes out to everyone that might be certified in that area. So that's one of the outreaches we've done. And the other thing is word of mouth and that, you know, we encourage our employees that they know people that are qualified and would do a good job on Bloomfield Hills to share that information. And we've had, in some instances, some very diverse pools, diverse in many different ways that have come through and applied. But of course, there's still work that needs to be done to continue to cast that net as education becomes more and more transient at the moment.
Is that a question in like the student survey where not necessarily is there somebody of, you know, what I consider, whatever my background is, but like maybe along the lines of, is there someone at my school that I feel comfortable talking to? Whether, it doesn't have to be, you know.
That is a big part of our student survey. And we actually have been talking about that a lot lately. Specifically, I feel connected to adults in my building. And we have actually had some really great conversations with our middle school students and high school students over the past month or so. That's kind of our focus in our National Equity Project work, is that data in particular and how do, and what does it mean for students to feel connected to adults and what would adults need to do in order for students to feel more connected? So we've been actually having some really rich dialogue with students about that.
And that came out of the surveys as well, right?
Yeah, so we reviewed our equity and inclusion data with all of our student sentience in middle and high school.
Howard. So I actually love all of the initiatives that are in here. It's so, so robust and, and extensive. So thank you. The, on page three, there's one initiative here addressing disparities, disparate outcomes for K-12 mathematics. I am kind of speaking to my, the board members will be carrying over into January. I think this is so important, not just for mathematics, but also for ELA and, and all of our subjects, but in particular ELA and math, to see whether the, the team of eight, the new team of eight, would consider elevating that from one of, what, 15 or so initiatives within the JDI plan to a, a board goal. We have some elements of that where it's a 2% improvement in, or reduction in the opportunity gaps by 2026. But to try to have a more robust conversation and possibly even take that 2% number and make it even more aggressive. Also, K-12 is obviously important, impacting all the kids, but maybe focusing on, you know, K-3 because it's a lot easier to address issues when it's a more limited grade structure than trying to do 13 years of kids. But, so I'm speaking to the people who are going to, on this table, who are going to be there next year, and also a person who happens to be in the, in the room right now in the, in the audience, that I think opportunity gaps are so wide. And even in Bloomfield Hills with $12,000 to $13,000 worth of, of foundation allowance, that we still have these kind of differences between different demographic groups is something that I think we should put even more focus on.
Thank you for putting in the panorama data with goals in the, in the last column for most of the items. Yeah, I guess the, what the, Row, Howard, you were just addressing the data piece, you know, could be linked back to the strategic plan numbers and the district goal numbers. That would be helpful to include.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I already opened, maybe you kind of had it, I don't know, but what were some of the things identified by potential staff that they're looking for in a district? You know, when we reach out to diverse potential hires, what are, what are they looking for in, in a district? They have their choice among several. What's important to them?
I noticed some of the feedback and then Margaret, hop in if you want to. They want a welcoming environment. There's concern whether or not they'll be accepted by staff, students, and parents in the community because they're coming from a little different background. What are we doing for onboarding to make sure that there's a support system for them when they arrive and that support system continues? What is the pay? That conversation usually goes very, very well, as well as can possibly go. And what are the opportunities for growth? If they have aspirations to move up, maybe be a teacher leader, maybe a department head, maybe an administrator, are there people similar to my background that have those positions within your school district? Therefore, I know there will be an opportunity because I can visibly see those opportunities have been offered to quality candidates in the past. So some of the feedback I've received.
Yeah, I would probably lean more on just some of the research I've read. And most of the research would say actually pay is, is, is kind of low on, on that scale. It's really climate and culture. It's, and so when Pat, you know, talks about we hire people who want to bring their friends in, like that, or want to recommend Bloomfield as a district, like that's really important when we talk about, you know, people who may have marginalized identities, thinking about what support structures they will have once they enter in to the school district. People want to hear about that. How are you going to support me when I am there, when I do encounter, you know, racism or discrimination, which will happen, right? Like, will this district support me? You know, so those are the kinds of things that people are looking for.
Can you talk about some of the things that you are doing? Because they're really wonderful. And I don't know that people know that.
Yeah, I mean.
That you do support diverse hires who are afraid of exactly that happening.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we try to do it in a variety of ways. I think our principals are really kind of on, on the front of, of all of that, really making sure that we have mentors that match well, you know, with, with the strengths of the individuals that we're bringing in. I think we also are always like meeting individually, many of us meeting individually with teachers, checking. I know Pat, particularly when we have new hires, will like stop in their classrooms, which I don't think, you know, it probably happens in a lot of places, but I know it's very valued to our staff when central office administrators stop by just to say hi. So those are, those are some like little things.
I guess I'm specifically also thinking about some of the groups that, that have formed, you know, unique to somebody's background so that they have social outside of school, but also professional support systems.
Yeah, well, and we were running for a long time an African-American staff network. And, and I think like COVID, like it went up and then kind of backed down again. So we have some teachers that I know want to bring that back. We also.
That, that's a great thing. Is there correlation with the dip that we saw and maybe that kind of falling out of the wayside or maybe not?
I think there's some teachers that want to bring it back. I don't think there's a correlation. I honestly think just after being gone and then coming back and the in and out was just too much for everybody. And I think people were kind of like, I can't even have one more thing, even if it is something supportive. I think one of the other things that has been great, when, when the budget's in a great place and we can send people, National Equity Project has some trainings that are specifically affinity groups. So we were able to send, I think, 10 of our black staff members to a training specifically about supporting one another in, in, as teachers, with, with teachers from across the country. And I know that that was a really valuable experience. I got a lot of really positive feedback about that. And teachers have asked again to be able to attend those. So I think when we can afford to do things like that, it's very much appreciated.
And so onboarding is an area we will need to continue to refine because we want to make sure everyone we hire has a great experience and they say.
Do all of our new teachers have a, a big buddy or a mentor?
They do all have a mentor.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's part of the onboarding process.
Because that's equity in itself, right?
Right.
It's taking care of our new teachers.
For all of our new staff. We want to make sure they have a great onboarding process. And then, to piggyback what Margaret said, culture and climate is really huge, and so if somebody is happy here and doing well, and they reach out and refer someone, that's, I personally think that's really positive. As far as the dip, I think the dip is just based on the positions we have and people that have certifications, because the, the net has been cast wide, and when we sit down for a lot of these interviews, depending on the position, it is a very diverse applicant pool in many ways. So that is the goal, in part, is to make sure we have a diverse applicant pool that is sitting in front of everyone and going through the interview process. And there's a lot of work that's been done there in a positive way.
Do we know when there's been a referral? Like, do we ask and keep track of that data?
I can say I don't keep track of the data, but things come directly to us from staff members, and then if that candidate is a candidate that's qualified and should be interviewed, then they are interviewed.
All right, so let me just ask this, piggybacking on that, the way that we define qualified, and to the extent that we include experience, I really hope that we look for non-traditional experience, as well as maybe more traditional experience, because to get your foot in the door as an affinity group member is difficult. So it shuts off experience in a lot of ways. If you're looking at an application of somebody who appears on paper to have less experience, are we looking at life experiences in different areas and non-traditional experiential?
So what I'm referring to is certification. If we have a math postsenate, and you're Pat Watson, you're social studies certified, you're not getting an interview. You're not highly qualified to teach the subject. So, no, Margaret will tell you, I will not be teaching math, nor should I. Paul?
Thank you very much for this, Margaret. So I'm looking at, and getting to Jennifer's point, you put in a measurable growth targets. Just trying to understand what, so if I look at the first one, where it says sense of belonging, we're 40%, 46% favorable, I guess we've measured that. What does that, what does that mean? We, we asked who, and what's the 46% represent?
So that's all of our students across 612. Every single one of them was asked that question, and we, so their overall percentage, so sense of belonging is actually like a section, it's a series of questions, so not just one question. It's a series of questions that, that culminates in a sense of belonging favorability rating. And so depending on the questions, there may be, it's like a Likert scale, right? So there may be five options, two of those are considered favorable, three are not. In some questions, it's three are favorable, two are not. It just depends on, on the question and the research behind it. So that 46% favorable is given to us by Panorama, since they do our surveys. So it's, that's just like a section of the survey that was given to all of our 612 students.
And how many, and let's just say, I don't know what the number is, but what percentage completed it? You're saying all was-
It was really high. It was given to all, it was very high. I, I think it was about 90% of our students took it, so it would be a reliable data.
It was in our package that we went through.
It's in this, it's, the whole survey is in the package, Paul, but, so just to build on what he's saying. That 46%, according to the report, Panorama report, was 20th to 39th percentile compared to others nationally.
Correct. It is definitely something that we need to work on.
And obviously, this is less about equity and inclusion, this is a bigger question about the culture in the school as a whole, right? We're not talking just people of color, you know, obviously, this is the entire population.
Absolutely.
And if only 46% of our students feel connected, what should, to, to the school and the district, what should we be doing differently?
So I think that's a great question, and I can tell you what we've started doing to try to figure out the answer, because I don't think we have like a magic answer, but one of the things that we've been, so the question of, with sense of belonging, the question of connection to adults is within that category. So, and that is our lowest question within the sense of belonging. And it's something that all of us are, are concerned about, right? And so what we started doing, particularly in, I'll speak about the middle school first. In the middle school, we have three, a team in each building working with National Equity Project. We reviewed this data with the students, and then talked to the students about, you know, what they were seeing, why they thought these numbers were low, so they had some ideas. What we did with that then is we held empathy interviews with a diverse cross-section of students from across sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in all three of our middle schools. And we took that data and then reviewed the empathy interview data with the students and teams in each of those buildings, and now we're starting to build out inquiry cycles to try some stuff out and, and see, like, if we can gain some traction. So we're, really, we're listening to the students to tell us what those things are that will help build that sense of belonging. So we're kind of in that process right now, and should have some good answers of what we've tried by the end of the year.
Great, great start. Pat's gonna hate me for saying this, but this is exactly what the MyKit process is supposed to do. You look at the issue, and then you delve into root causes, corrective actions, developing strategies, which we just talked about. This is exactly the kind of thing that we can use MyKit for.
You're, you're right.
Yeah.
I think the other thing to keep in mind, this is one year of data coming out of two years of COVID restrictions. Don't sit next to one, don't talk, don't do this, don't do that. Not making excuses, just stating facts. So as you can see, Margaret and her team are already working on problem solving around it, but we also want to see what the data is going to look like this year, and see, is this a two-year trend, now that we've had a quote-unquote regular, normal, whatever we're going to call this school year? And then that will help as we move forward. So when we sit here, this time next year, we say, okay, 46%, it went down to 34%. Oh my. So now we've got a trend, and it's actually gotten worse. Or 46% next year, it's at 83. Okay, maybe it was more COVID-related. I think those stories and narratives will start to play out, and then that can guide some other decisions we make.
I do think what's important to note, though, and I'm not disagreeing with you, but we also were low, low nationally normed, and everybody nationally had a similar situation. So I do think it, it continues to be an area where we need to, we have work to do.
Are you considering tapping, like, individual students who marked it particularly low, or little focus groups?
We cannot see every single student's individual scores. Yeah, it's anonymous. So we, I wouldn't be able to do that. But I could, well, we can see a sense of belonging score for each student, so we did actually talk about that, and I showed the principals, the principals are well aware of how to get into that and look, and I actually think that might be, because the principals just gave, I did five empathy interviews with students at BHMS, and they just gave me the kids, so I actually do think that they use some of those scores to determine which kids we were going to talk to.
Yeah, I think if you get three or four kids together in a safe, you know, environment, they might-
Like a fishbowl or a-
Yeah, you might get a lot of information.
From the five kids I talked to. I had Daisy with me when I did this, so the kids like opened up right away, and I was just getting floods of information. At the high school, we, and Natalie's welcome to speak about this if she wants, our student senate, we, we went through the data again and talked about different, some different ways we could administer the survey, because they were concerned about the administration of it. But also, each of our student senate students was going to talk to five of their friends, and we have specific questions, and they're going to bring that data back, so that if each of the 30 students on student senate gets five kids, it's 150 kids, which is a pretty decent sample size from the school. So that will help us kind of make some decisions on what to move forward with at the high school.
If I may make a suggestion, try to reach out to, you know, I'm just going to say it, you guys are a bunch of high flyers, your friends probably are too. Maybe try to reach out to people who maybe aren't your friends.
We talked about that, yeah.
And who don't ever say anything, because they just aren't inclined to, but kind of maybe want to, if they were given the chance.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm curious about the same thing. How do students get to be on the Student Equity Council? Not give feedback to you, but get to be actually on it?
Student Equity Council, anyone can join. Yeah, that's totally open, anyone who wants to.
They can be, come in at the same level as anyone who's already on the Student Equity Council, if they choose to.
Yeah, but that's a Student Equity Council, which is different than the Student Senate. The Student Senate is, we don't choose the people who go on Student Senate. The Student Senate is all the different affinity groups and groups that we have at the high school. The students choose the representatives that they want to have there. So it is a really diverse group of kids, but they, they choose who's gonna come.
Look, I'm thinking a student that speaks at public comment at a board meeting, a student that maybe spoke at the high school when we brought in Jay Marks, and students kind of lined up at the microphone. Who's reaching out and inviting them to be part of these kinds of conversations?
There was a lot of reach out after that community forum. I think the administration met with every single one of the kids that spoke more than once, and some of those students are now sitting on Student Senate or Student Equity Council, because that was a big push, is like, we have these spaces, we'd love to have you and your voice there. And we've got a lot of new Student Equity Council kids this year, which is really exciting.
Okay, good. So they're, if they're not coming forward, they're being invited from students who have shown, have demonstrated that they have concerns that they are willing to talk about and share?
Yes.
Okay.
Along that line, so you talked about Jay Marks. You know, Jay's retired, and Cornelius is now there. Have we got a relationship with Cornelius?
Cornelius and I are very good friends. Yes, we speak almost every day. So, yeah, yep.
Because it would be lovely, I think, you know, because I think this board, you know, we had a lot of interaction with Jay, you know, four or five years ago. Maybe in the future that you can invite Cornelius to a board meeting.
He would absolutely be open to that. He wants to work with boards, he wants to work with superintendents. I think he's going to pop in. We have a cabinet retreat coming up, all focused on equity, that I'm leading with, actually someone who, from Rochester, similar position to me, and her and Cornelius and I are really close, so he's probably going to pop into our cabinet retreat as well.
Because Cornelius hasn't yet, he's been there for about six months now.
Yeah.
And hasn't come to the Oakland County School Board Association, which is a good way to introduce him around the, because you did it, I think.
Yeah, I did, he did come to one after that, because I know there were several people that attended.
Anyway, it's just trying to get him into the, into the mix.
Yep, yep, he's getting, getting there for sure.
Well, this is immensely useful data and eye-opening, so thanks to the administration for administering the Panorama survey.
Yeah, the Panorama is really helpful for us.
In setting a baseline.
Yes. Yeah, and you can see, like, I kind of put, like, I kind of made guesses on what the improvement should be, because it is baseline data, so I'm not sure. We'll kind of see how it goes, but. What'd you say?
After the next set of surveys, we'll have a better idea.
Yeah, we'll have a better idea of how to set targets for the following year. Like, two years is easier to set targets than one, but.
Paul, go ahead.
Just a couple, right? Because we're reading this, and, you know, for our communities, so even though it is in our package. So when you say the global equity team favorable 80%, what, what does that mean? It's one of the data points, said panoramic data from the-
Oh, so I was looking specifically at diversity and inclusion percent favorable. So there's a, a section within the Panorama survey that is focused on diversity and inclusion, and the percent favorable in that category was 85%.
It was 80%? Right, 80%?
Oh, 80%, I'm sorry. Yeah.
These are adults on the GET teams answering?
No, no, no. I'm looking only at student, student outcomes.
So this is all student surveys, so it's not-
Yeah, I, we should all be measuring everything by student. Yeah.
And so, one thing was interesting going down, so the, maybe I'm reading it, so the therapy dog program, when we, because, you know, and not to, like, why would that be 50, in the 50s? What, you know, is, what does that measure?
That doesn't have anything to do really with, that's more of a, so we're looking at emotional regulation, because therapy dogs should impact emotional regulation, and so the, in, we have not just an equity and inclusion survey, but also an SEL survey. The SEL survey has a section dedicated to emotional regulation from the Castle Core Competencies, and so that is a low percentage for us, although we're still in the 90th percentile nationally. So that's just saying that for grades three through five, the percent favorable on emotional regulation was 53%. So that means 53% of students are self-identifying themselves as being able to emotionally regulate.
That's the 90%. So that's kind of-
It's in the 90th percentile, so grades three through five don't, that means that they're not physically able to-
That's a state of the country, that 90%. 58%.
We're talking about grades three through five.
Yeah, we're talking about eight to 10-year-olds, and a lot of, for them to even know that they can't do it is probably a good sign.
That's why I put that on, because when I saw the 52%, I was like, oh, that's really low, but then I'm like, oh wait, it's always important to look at how we rank nationally.
What is, like, the definition? We're 59% of cultural awareness, so what is, what does that define from a student? Cultural awareness?
Cultural awareness, it asks questions about their, like, that's them self-identifying their awareness of other cultures, and, and, I mean, I could pull the exact questions to see what they are, but it's, again, it's just a section on the survey that specifically asks students about their cultural awareness.
So 59% are not aware of other, I'm just trying to understand what the data means. 59%, it says favorable 59%, 59% are aware, so 41% are not aware.
It's related to specific questions.
Yeah, so 59% are reporting favorable with, with regards to the five questions in that section. Yeah.
Margaret?
Yes, on a Likert scale.
My question is, in response to some of those specific questions, when you read the student response to them, I know there's not a way to reach out to them individually, but a lot of them identify issues at home, like they come from a religiously conservative family, and they talk about being conflicted with, you know, they feel a certain way, or, you know, more open-minded to certain things, and their conflict is mainly at home. What, that we really can't touch, is there, is there room to help students like that, and how, if there is?
Yeah, I mean, I, because you're talking about specifically some of the, like, responses that they had the opportunity to like add to the comments.
Yeah, a lot of the comments, maybe older kids were, you know, identifying issues with LGBTQ in high school, and that they were open-minded, but then when they go home, their families are more conservative about stuff, and that they, they feel conflicted because they won't, and they, one of them, I won't forget, stayed with me, because it was something like, you know, I'd love to be able to bring what I learned in school home to my parents, so I could help them, you know, it was really moving, but, but-
Yeah, that's tough, because it is anonymous, we don't know which students. I think, you know, just continuing to have students, like, you know, reach out to, to those, you know, particularly those that have trusted adults, and our, our job is to make sure, right, that every single student has at least one trusted adult that they feel like they can talk to within the building.
Yeah.
And, and we're not there yet, right? We're, we're still working on that.
Because a lot of these conflicts are between what they're learning in school and what they learn at home, and that's a hurdle for us.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, you can't solve those issues. We only have the student, staff has students for eight hours in a day.
We're, right, we offer, like, I had a health and wellness meeting today with the PTOC, right? Like, we're, we're doing a lot to offer learning opportunities for, for parents and caregivers as well, on a variety of topics across the course of the year, to give our parents whatever opportunities.
What are those, just out of curiosity? Because when I was on the GET team, that was a huge topic of conversation, because a lot of the problems or conflicts came from different views at home. How can we bring parents in to let them know what we're teaching, and what we're, you know, some of the exposing opinions and resources?
We have to keep, like, we welcome every parent's opinion, right? Like, we welcome every parent's opinion, we welcome every parent's participation in their child's education. And so I think, for me, I believe all of that is from the relationships that we build with our families, and most of that is happening at the building level, right, with principals, but particularly with teachers. And so continuing to have those partnerships where parents also feel safe to share what they're concerned about, what they may be worried about their children learning, so that, so that, you know, we can talk about what's important to us, because I don't want to dismiss somebody's views just because they might be different than something, right? I think that their, their values are important to us as well, and how do we work together with every family to ensure that, you know?
Because it exacerbates, if they're not heard, and especially if they feel like their beliefs do differ from what their student may be being exposed to or being taught. I think at the building level is a great place to address it, so they have an opportunity to come in into a safe space and talk about why they maybe don't like what, what we're teaching as well.
Yeah, and we have a bunch, plenty of parents that reach out for things like that.
If I could build on that, so specifically, to your knowledge, have there been meetings, discussions among anyone with family members, specifically about the concern that, that this aspect of the curric- that, that this aspect of the curriculum is taking away from more traditional academic aspects of the curriculum? Because that's, that's the, you know, that's the boogie bear in the room, right? That, and, you know, like you said, everyone's thoughts and lived experiences are valid. But I'm just wondering if, if our district has had an opportunity yet to engage in that discussion, if families want to have that discussion?
We have had several, yes. Yep, across all grade levels, across all buildings.
Cool.
So, I think the way to address those things, as you've been saying, is transparency. We just looked at the, you know, the curriculum by grade and providing that information to the parents and trying to build or, and increasing the trust that we have with the parents.
Yeah, I think one thing too, and Simba, you mentioned it earlier, right? When we were talking about the particularly sense of belonging data and that being about all kids. I think, I would argue that all equity and inclusion is about all kids, right? And that's the message that we really try to help parents understand, is that we're not doing equity and inclusion so that a handful of students can feel that they belong. We want every single one of our students to walk into our building every day and feel like this is a place for them. And that's what this work is about. I'm reading this book right now that's talking about how we need to move away from the, like, anti kind of language. And I'm really kind of grabbing onto that. And like, our, our work is about everybody. And our work is about every single student, every day, feeling valued and cared for. And that their learning is, matters to us and it matters to them. And that's really what, what we're trying to achieve with all of this.
And they're also going to be, going into a workforce, into a life of a diverse population.
Of course, yes.
So, is, so to that point, so is, is all these, or going forward, but maybe it wasn't as well in the past, all these surveys and curriculum, is that going to be transparent and available and posted easily for people?
They were, these were posted before we gave them last year, and they still are on the website.
Because I know some of the feedback, and maybe they just didn't find it, was that it did come, some of these surveys came to a shock, to some...
Yeah, there seemed to be some confusion about the surveys. And I did have some conversations with parents that thought, like, our SEL curriculum meant we were giving surveys every month. That is not the case, once a year. We may give an interim survey. Our middle schools are looking at that, just to kind of gauge some of the things that we're doing. But there was some confusion about that. But both of the surveys are currently posted on the website under, I believe, under Social Emotional Learning. All the questions are there. Everything's available and, yeah.
And the data answered?
The data is not there right now. Yeah, we haven't talked about that yet.
If a parent wants to opt out their children from taking the survey, do they have that right?
Yes, absolutely.
Very good.
So, on the first page, under discipline and restorative practices, the goal seems to be to reduce out-of-school suspension. Are there more finite goals underneath that, that kind of target the demographics that we want? Like, that, that we see these, kind of like, and I've, I've heard from parents, like, that there's disparities in the discipline. And is there a way that we're trying to address that, that's kind of not in this, like, balloon of all students? We're just going to try to reduce out-of-school suspension by a certain percentage?
Well, I think the reality is, right, like, all of these measurements are kind of like, big picture. And maybe not, like, I, I don't know if I, like, I don't know how to say this the right way. Of course, I care what is on the survey. But something being 56% is not my goal, right? So, my goal is changing the student experience. That's all of our goals, right? Is the student experience. And so, when we think about, like, discipline and restorative practices, yes, what we want to look at is, like, who's being referred to the office? And those are things, those are conversations we're having one-on-one or two-on-one, three-on-one with principals and assistant principals specifically. Like, who is referring kids down to the office? And who are they referring down to the office? Who is getting detentions, suspensions? And is that proportionate? Is that disproportionate? So, we are absolutely, those are the things that we're really actually probably working on. And we're hoping that the end result is that we'll see some, we'll see some lowering of out-of-school suspensions in, like, the long-term goal. But those are more like, these are more the lag measures, right? And, am I saying that right? Yes, thank you. These are more the lag measures and, and the lead measures are what we're really leaning into day-to-day.
These also, and again, it's, it's a small, very incredibly small percentage of the kids. But this is the proactive way you address an Oxford situation, long-term. In terms of, you know, making kids safe and making kids understood that they have an adult they can go to, so that a situation that's been going around in, you know, Uvalde or in Sandy Hook or so many of these places, we don't have that issue here in Bloomfield.
Yeah, most of this would be considered like, kind of tier-one preventative proactive work.
Thank you, Margaret. You and your team.
Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret. That kind of, so, for the board, C is our goal from, from, for the year, related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And what exactly that, that meant to us and what, what our plan is for fulfilling that goal for this year. And there was an email that came out from Rebecca a couple of days ago, trying to determine whether or not this, what Margaret has put together fulfills it, if there's something else that we kind of thought we were going to do. I'm not sure, so...
When we talked about that goal, when we sat in committee, and Michelle and I and Margaret and Susan and, I know I'm leaving somebody out. I think I am. Anyway, Simba, you were there. Sorry. Yeah, because you're sitting right next to me, of course, I forget. Anyway, we, we talked about, maybe the, I think it covers a lot of it, to answer your question. But I think maybe the one component that might be missing is we had hoped to, to develop something that was unique to the board. Maybe something like other districts do, like, a 21-day challenge, or they read a book, or they do something that seven board members specifically can do to build team cohesiveness, but also, you know, to maybe be aware of things that if this was a full-time job and you were, you know, a staff of the district, you would be getting it. But we won't necessarily, because we do our day jobs and don't do that. So, I think that might be the, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, that maybe is the one thing that we didn't do.
So, you can have, remember there, and again, it's going to, a lot of weight is going to be on the four incumbent board members, because you've got three new people who don't know that much about any of this stuff. But you've got district and superintendent goals, and you have board goals. So, like, reading and 21-day challenge could be a board goal for ourselves, for the seven or the team of eight. But also could be, because I think Farmington had that for the administration and the staff, too.
Yeah, we mentioned Farmington, but we thought we'd start with just the board. And then maybe if it, you know, was sort of testing it out and then hopefully expanding it further if it worked.
Let me ask the superintendent or Margaret, have, you know what the 21-day challenge is. Has there been any talk about, has that occurred within the administration? Or has it been talked about?
No, not, not at this time. I know Farmington did it, and that's great. And, you know, we're doing some other things to kind of move things forward. But that's not something we've discussed in probably the past eight months, really.
No, and part of our GET work, like, I would take, because I've facilitated it a few times with groups outside of Bloomfield. And for part of that, like, for our GET team, we would take, like, a piece of it and put it in each GET meeting. So, we try to have, like, those learning pieces in all of our, just like, meeting structures. So, not specifically, like, oh, we're going to do this for 21 days, but more like, how do we incorporate that just into who we are?
But again, so the GET team is a group of people in each one of the buildings.
Sure, yeah.
But this is for the entire, you know, could be potentially for the entire staff to sort of get them into the...
Well, I guess my, my question is, how, how do we fulfill this goal for this board for this year?
I remember what you said, Lisa, but I also, was also my understanding that this is a board goal related to what was accomplished in the beginning of the year, where strategic goal area five was, the language was formalized and three or four major sub-goals were established, right? So, that was something that Michelle and friends, you know, got, got done.
Yeah, unfortunately, Michelle was leading this, and she's not here today.
I think we, as a group of three or a group of seven, need to do more work. We haven't made as much progress as we would like. I mean, we, I think we've talked about it earlier on in the year. We've seen something put together by the administration. So, I think we really haven't met on this topic lately, to be perfectly honest. And I think it's something we need to pick up and, and move the needle early next year.
Margaret, what's the name of the book you said you were reading now?
Oh, and I bought a copy for... I know, I wanted to have it. It's called Ruthless Equity.
Okay.
I can send it to you.
Can we send it to you? Not the book, just the title.
The title, yes. Yep.
John, one thing to consider for next year is when board goals are decided, put a name on the board next to each one, that they would be the champion, to make sure that it, it carries forward, so that we don't get to the end of the year and seeing that it sort of hasn't gotten as far as we would like.
Sure. We, this one, I mean, we tried to put a month next to each one. And so, obviously, we've gotten to December 1st, and this was a November thing. And we tried to do our best to, to address those things timely. And I'll take responsibility for, you know, the ones we don't get to...
It's not a blame thing, it's just trying to, when you do it, put in, you know, have someone say, I'll take that one.
Because I wasn't clear exactly what, what our goal was, and so it was hard.
I would agree with Simba's assessment, 100%. But maybe that, where I thought we did a lot of good work was initially crafting language that I think we spent a lot of time on. So, the foundation is there. Whoever picks this up doesn't have to reinvent that part of it, because we did spend a lot of time with that.
And I, all the language is in, I mean, you see, like, I'm in that, in the plan, I pulled all that language.
We just need to do a little more work to get it across the finish line.
Yeah, I think that's true.
Okay.
But that leads into one pet peeve I've had, right? Is what, going to committee of the whole, right? I think we have lost some of that, because we moved away from these subcommittees, right? So, we may keep it as, so how do we get this work done going forward? I don't have an answer. I'm going to throw it out to other members of the board. We've got priorities for next year, like, say, academic achievement, right? How do we propose to work with the district, with the administration on that? I don't think we've got an answer yet, and that's something for the new group of seven to work through. But how is a group of seven going to work through that? How is somebody going to address, you know, subcommittee-level work like DEI? Should it be done as a, I mean, do we have enough time with a committee of the whole structure, right? Meeting 12 times a year to get a certain amount of work done?
I think, you know, just, again, being someone who's before committee of the whole, had, you know, subcommittees, you know, and obviously, when I was president, I set up, you know, task forces or things like that. I think, to your point, that's a discussion the new board needs to have and decide what's the most efficient way to try to get things done. I think we've experienced eight months of committee of the whole. I could give you anecdotes for years of the old structure. And then we could decide as a new board, you know, what we think's the most efficient way to get things done.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a little off-topic, but to me, maybe the most important discussion of the evening in that it's completely, not, not that the other discussions weren't important, but this is up to seven board members to set a foundation for how productive you're going to be able to be. And I think, if I'm hearing what Simba's saying correctly, you know, it would have been nice to be able to work more on this. It was something that was of interest to Simba and Michelle and I, and we gravitated to that committee, I think, for that reason. But we just, there was no time to do it. We put, we spent so much time doing so many other things that I, I don't feel like it was, we left something. I feel like, you know, it was going to be like that, or my work, or my family. You know, it was just, it was too much. So, in order to get things accomplished, there may be a better way to do it. I mean, you're open to discussing that with whoever, you know, however the seven of you going forward see it to be most productive. I'll say, from the couple of years that we had committees, in my experience, they were extremely ineffective. So, we spent time in committees and got less done than committee of the whole. I don't know what your experience was. I was never in the same one as Jennifer.
It depends how the committees are structured and, and what the empowerment is of that committee.
Right, so if you do come up with committees...
So, it's not the committee by definition, it's the way the committee goes wrong.
They should be structured to be productive and effective.
Well, maybe not like a standing committee, but a committee, like, like a task force, like you said, specific to a task.
To the extent that form follows function, right? Like, I, I think I said this last time, but I would encourage the four of you in OMA compliant ways, work on goals this month, right? So that when January 1st hits, you're, you're really ready to go. And then you can decide which structures will best support those goals, yeah.
And it's just not the team of seven, but it's a team of eight. Pat has to be part of the process, or needs to be part of the process.
Of course, like, we're talking about the big goals, the district goals, the super goals, and the board goals.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of room to structure committees in a way that doesn't erode trust, while at the same time, you know, an ideal functioning team takes work away from each other, not adds to it. So, to the extent that, you know, you can delegate and, and trust each other to take care of things, you'll be a lot more productive.
And one of the things that I think Pat was bringing up last year, when we went to the committee of the whole, is a lack of communication between the committees and the board. And people didn't understand what was going on. And I think we, I think we can address some of those issues without having to eliminate all the committees.
Yeah, committee of the whole, to me, was a huge step forward, given where we were. But it does have inherent drawbacks. And so, and if there's not trust, you can't move beyond committee of the whole. You just need that. If you have it, I hope you do, you could be more productive and have committees that function better than ours.
Again, the committee of the whole, look at the staff time with Vicki and everyone here. It's, it's a lot of overhead to, to do this when, and coordinating seven people or eight people's schedules. It's a lot of effort.
It's pros and cons, right? So, you could look at the intern committee, right? Three, you know, three of us hammered it home, made a recommendation, recommendation was taken, we moved on. I mean, again, to Lisa's point, there's pros and cons if, you know, done in a certain way. So, we could look at that with the new board.
Okay, we ready to look at the agenda for December 15? Looks like we'll be celebrating the tennis, the boys' tennis team. Couple people that are here.
Oh, just point of information, are we having the student intern council meeting at 3:30 on the 15th? As, I think Rebecca, you had sent out a notice, okay?
Yes, so we have Lisa, who is the chair.
Okay.
And then we're going to extend the invitation to our incoming board members if they'd like to observe the meeting.
Okay. So, do you, do you need more bodies at that meeting?
We have up to two more.
Okay.
I want to say too, you know, I, I realize it's not ideal to have somebody be a chair when they're leaving in the middle of the board intern term. But I, I think maybe moving forward for that committee, Rebecca, because of the continuity and because of her role, I mean, she's the go-to person with them. They go to her with questions, and she's phenomenal, anyway, we all know that. I, I think that that's a committee that maybe doesn't need a board chair. Maybe all board members sort of chipping in to be there and support our students. But Rebecca is really, and should be, the go-to person for information and to, you know, saying.
So, on the closed session for the superintendent evaluation, and this will be up to the superintendent and the, the rest of the board, you know, consider maybe inviting the new board members to that also.
It's up to only the superintendent.
So, it's up to the superintendent.
What is 11B, amending the IA's letter of understanding? What, what does that involve?
That's with regard to the contract, right?
Right, so outside of, you know, the teachers and their individual contract, the school district, there's a letter of understanding for, like, stipends.
That's been resolved?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we just have to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay. Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
This is on, all right, so on 11D, the resolution approving the sinking fund, I personally think this is something that the new board should vote on. I don't think it's something that the old board, I think the new board's going to be the ones that are going to have to get behind it. So I personally think it should be pulled off and put on a subsequent agenda.
Tina, is that, what's the?
What's the timing issue?
So if you note, I believe it says placeholder. So as administration is working through the capital improvement plan, as well as all the options and bills that are currently in the legislature regarding changes in election dates, that's still.
They just passed something yesterday, I think. They just moved from March to February, I think, for the, that's 2024.
Okay, yeah, I'm talking about 2023, eliminating some dates. So as that is up in the air, it still does remain a placeholder. So I'm actively listening to all of your comments.
Well, can it, can it be voted on in January and February, or February, and still make the target election date?
Yes, yes, we would have more time.
Okay.
We're just trying to review everything internally. We continue to have meetings with Paul Wills and his team about the needs of the district. So.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
We'll probably have an update before the 15th.
I don't have strong feelings about whether I'm involved in the decision. I totally get it, yeah.
I mean, I guess the secondary effect of moving it to, like, to January is whether or not the new board members will be up to speed as to all the things that we've already discussed, you know, so that's the. Right, we'd have to catch them up for something like that. Since Paul is an incumbent, is when reelected, that leaves three that are actually new to the board. And so that could be small group meetings. And we could do it that way. Kind of like how Siva suggested, some things just need to be done in a smaller group rather than bringing it all back to the Committee of the Whole, that's what we end up doing, that we'd meet with those, find a time to do with those three new board members, kind of take them down the path in the story of, here's where we've been, here are the details, here's where we'd like to go, let them digest some of the information, and probably come back a second time and say, now that you've had this opportunity, what did you notice? What do you wonder? What gaps can we fill in for you? What questions do you have? So I do think we could catch them up. I don't think that that would be a problem. Again, we're just trying to work through a lot of details. If you look at the documents, 159 pages or something. And, you know, as we turn over another rock, it leads to a different idea, thought, decision, potentially it could impact. But we'll have a further update to the board.
I'm at your disposal to be part of a roadshow or whatever you want.
I was going to say, yeah, I was.
Okay, thank you.
As much as I don't really have an opinion on when the vote is, I do disagree that just the new board members have to get behind it. I'm behind it, always supported 100%. I see the need for it. I will still have a kid in this district, and even when I don't, if I'm still in the district, I support the schools. So you can always count on me.
I had an HOA meeting for the bond and stuff like that.
I didn't say that, the new, I just think this decision should be by the new board.
Yeah, yeah. I have no objection to that.
Only the new board members need to get behind it. I didn't say that.
I'm just offering my free services.
Me too.
As a mouth.
Because I want this, when it goes to the voters, to pass, because I want this to pass overwhelmingly, if it does go in December, in the December 15th meeting, I will be bringing up an amendment to the motion to do a poll of the community. But obviously, if you move it to January, I won't be on the board, so it'll be up to the seven board members to decide to do that or not.
So what do we, what do we decide? Keep it on or leave it, or take it off?
Well, not technically on.
All right, so we're not going to.
I think Rebecca needs to follow up, right, about where you are in your, do you need more time to gauge where you are in your discussions?
Yeah, we need some more time to gauge where our discussions, to make sure we're going to be fully prepared for December. Again, there's a lot of moving pieces right now, and a lot of things are coming at us quickly. So we should have an update to the board, I would say, next week is probably your board update, to look for something there. Okay, well, as we sit here today, is everyone okay with moving it to January regardless?
Obviously, I am.
Right.
I think it depends on the timing that Tina outlined.
Tina said it didn't matter.
Well, she said she's waiting to see what the legislature does with the election dates, so.
Yeah, and that's.
We'll be okay.
And you'll know that in a week or two.
Everything that, everything that Pat described is absolutely accurate. We will know within a week. I know you've left placeholders on before, but if this board feels more comfortable simply removing it and asking it for it to be delayed, then that decision's made. We're fine. We have lead time, we started early.
Okay, it would be no problem for us on our end whatsoever. I'm fine with moving it. I think that, I mean, a number of the board members who were elected have been to some of, to the meetings where we discussed it anyways, so they have a base knowledge anyways. And as long as it's not going to take too much of your time or someone from the district's time to bring them up to speed. No, it actually gives us the opportunity to get to learn, know them a little bit better, and really have them dive into something substantial right away. And they can decide whether they want to vote no or yes, and kind of get to know that part of the finance, which is a big part. So no problem, we're good with it. I don't need to make a motion, you don't need to do anything, we'll just simply keep working with what we're doing, updating the packet. What you have with the valuation stuff is a draft, we don't have the final document quite complete. As I said, it's a 159, 160-page document, but doing it in January is fine. And now we know we can start working to get on their schedule, you know, with the three new board members, and find some time, work, and meet with them, and start getting them caught up on kind of where we're going to be. Okay.
Sorry, John, if, Tina, if there is time to get an interim package together, just status update on where we are as of December 15th for the numbers from where they were last time?
We hope to have that hopefully completed by the 15th.
Okay, it'd be good for us to get a status update.
Yes.
Well, if you remember, I don't know which number you're speaking of, but if you're speaking of the very large document that Pat's referring to, remember, we said that based on all of the meetings we've had and the updates, that would be ready after the holiday break.
Oh, yeah. You're right, that was the other meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't.
Maybe we should take a minute to discuss, or maybe at the board meeting, since it's on the agenda for then, the questions that we did have that were populating the Google docs, so we can go through those. We can be clear what we did and didn't promise to the community regarding, you know, I think that's a message that we have to at least clarify because we have been talking about it and, you know.
If I, if I might add, I don't see that agenda item covering that, only because we did address it in the Google doc. And yes, that is absolutely something that's part of a story, no matter when we go, no matter how much it is. I think it would, to really do it justice, to be a presentation at a board meeting, I think would require more time than just the responses in that document, which are, you know, just, it was very quick to make sure we addressed something.
Okay.
But I think it really deserves more time and attention than that at some point.
Yeah, I just, I foresee that being something kind of hanging out there that can be detrimental. People think that we've made promises when we poured over the, what was, that was about 150 pages as well, document, and presentations, and pulled out any ambiguous language, and never, ever was anything close to a promise made. So I think we should be clear about that.
So trustee Kumari, make sure I clarify, we're all on the same page. After the new year, we will get the final document with the line items and numbers to the full board. We'll reach out to the new board members regarding getting caught up to speed on the history of the sinking fund, what it can be used for, how that's changed, the opportunity to meet with Tina, myself, and her team. And then the new board will decide, yes, we'd like to put it to a vote, or no, we wouldn't, or we'd like these changes, and we just kind of go from there.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So just to go, so after December 15th, our next meeting is on January 12th?
Correct.
There's obviously no Committee of the Whole in early part of the January, correct?
I thought January 12th was Committee of the Whole.
It is.
Oh, it is Committee of the Whole, okay. Got it, okay. Got it, thank you.
26th of January.
The last item, Pat, is, are we going to leave that on? I know we talked about it briefly. Don't know if you had a chance to think about that, the placeholder for the superintendent contract. Yeah, so my request was for a two-year extension, but no other changes, no additional compensation. And I know we talked about it, I said that there were people that thought maybe the new board should vote on that as well, and you indicated that maybe you thought that people that knew you should vote on it, so it. Yeah. It's up to you if you want to leave it on, I mean, I think we can. I'd like to leave it on. You want to send it out to the attorney to make sure it was all hunky-dory and then. Yeah, it'd be just be a memo, yeah, obviously, definitely would like to leave it on, and, you know, it's traditional, that is reviewed once a year, and we changed my cycle from a June cycle to a December cycle, which means board members come on and off. But it should be, you know, either approved or not approved based on people that have actually evaluated me based on the job. Okay.
So is that listed anywhere on either of these agendas?
It's on F.
It's, it's.
Oh, there it is, I see it, I missed it, I missed it.
So my, I was one of the, you know, so obviously, we're doing the evaluation, and that would be a renewal for a year, right, based on the evaluation? So this is an addition, right?
No, the way my contract's written, there is no automatic renewal at any time. I know that's standard for most superintendents, but that's not the way my contract is.
Yeah, my, you know, my concern is during a so-called lame, you know, lame duck session, I would, I would make the recommendation that we go through the evaluation, have a one-year renewal, and then the new board would decide down the road, you know, as we're going to be here for minimum two years, decide if we want to extend it.
But some board members won't be there for two years. You do one-year extension.
No, at least two more years. There will be at least three board members that'll be around for two more years.
Oh, you're saying at the end of year one, everybody will.
It won't be a lame duck for anybody, that's my point. Again, if it's the will of the, my point is to take it off.
I think they're saying just let the new board vote and have it be a, is that what you're saying?
Let the new board decide.
Let the new board vote. So then it could be more than one year if the new board votes.
When do you think the new board should decide? At the end of next year or?
End of, end of another evaluation circle, cycle.
So do you still?
I only have 11 months left on my contract. I don't have an evergreen clause like many superintendents do, I don't have an automatic renewal, so that's why I ask for a two.
So that would happen, so obviously, close to, like, you can't give the board, you know, a month, so I would say six mon, you know, exactly, to decide when, when it's up, for the new board to decide.
Pat made a request, so if, if he's requesting, I get the optics of it, but, you know, I'm saying this is his request.
No, it's his request, but it's.
The superintendent operates under a contract with less than a year remaining.
Yeah, no kidding.
I challenge you to find anyone in the state of Michigan who's doing that.
All right, let's put it down.
Yep.
I'm good with that.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll work with the lawyer to have something drafted.
Something will be drafted, and then we'll vote on it.
I mean, put it this way, he's not asking for any amendment to, he's not even asking for any raise to a contract that's already in existence, so it's hard to argue lame duck bias. Right, and nor does a new board member have cause to not continue a contract.
I'm not saying anything, I'm not saying six months in, we couldn't, I'm just saying that, you know, it's the end of the year, it's not a guarant, you know, it's, it's not our obligation to do that, he's requested that, and I'm saying this should be a request made to the new board. And it could be three months in, four months in, five months in, I'm not saying it's January 12th, right? So I'm just saying.
So we're kind of in the spot because we changed the cycle, right? We went to a non-traditional cycle. So this is my fourth evaluation in three years, which is kind of how we're stuck here. I also have, you know, a contract that ends in December, when typically they would end, you know, June 30th or whatever, July 1st of that year. So changing the cycle kind of did that, and also not having a guaranteed renewal or some type of evergreen clause kind of put us in this situation. So I'm asking for a two-year extension. I feel I've done a nice job since I've been here, I'm not asking for any additional compensation or changes to the contract language. Unlike other superintendent contracts, I'm also a completely at-will employee, to the point where my contract allows you to terminate me either at will, or sorry, with cause or without cause. A lot of the contracts when I was superintendent, you can only terminate with a cause.
Or you pay the end of the contract in dollars.
Correct, you can terminate me with or without.
Yeah.
So I'm not asking for that to be taken out, I'm not talking, I'm not asking that if I'm effective or highly effective every year, that automatically renews, which you had previously in superintendent contract, a lot of these items. So I probably, in my opinion, challenge all of you to do your research, one of the least superintendent-friendly contracts in the state of Michigan at this point. So we can leave it on? Okay.
So is it set for a vote, then?
Yes, well, it's a placeholder right now, as long as everything is.
But we're, we're going to be voting on it as of now.
It's under board business.
And you'll talk to Dana, so.
Yeah. Okay, let's move on to January 12th study session.
Item 3A kind of appeared, can someone explain what that is?
But we're not going to be here, so.
No, but still, what is 3A? Oh, it's part of onboarding?
For the new board members.
Ah, okay, got it.
You'll be able to watch.
I didn't know whether it was initiated by Kevin, was something new coming down, or if this is on, very good.
Yeah, I just said to John privately, like, it's a great topic, and if Debbie Stare or Jay or somebody wanted to join in, I mean, all the love for Kevin, but he is our attorney and not necessarily a governance guy, unless he has some secret life I don't know about. But, yeah, if it's 90 minutes long, maybe having a second guest speaker might be nice.
I think Debbie Stare would be excellent.
Debbie Stare would be amazing if she, I don't know where she lives. Does anyone know where she lives?
In Lansing area, I think, so.
Rebecca?
So MASB and the legal councils haven't exactly teamed up on doing a partnership, yes? This is kind of like something that we're trying here in Bluefield, and it's really related to our policies. And so board members understand, you know, the policies that are in place, that they're responsible for governing, so there's a little bit of an overview of that. But it has been discussed that maybe there would be a partnership between Kevin and MASB going forward, but this is kind of like a first step.
Gotcha.
Like, the other items for the new board members swearing in, that kind of stuff, when does that happen?
Swearing in happened already.
Oh, it did? Yeah, we've done this swearing in, this will be on social media and all that. So Megan and Carolyn did it on Tuesday, I believe, this week, and then we toured some of the buildings, and then Tara and Paul were this afternoon.
So that's the formal, the legal one, but then the ceremonial one will be at the end of January?
Correct, at the board meeting.
Are you getting Judge Small again, or? What are you going to do?
No.
Okay.
Clerk Martin Brook.
Nice.
He's coming here.
Nice.
Yeah, and he's been here for that as well.
Oh, yeah, and he was the board president.
Correct.
That's so, circle of life.
Right. We never had a ceremonial swearing in.
I know, I was thinking that you guys should do one for.
That's right.
That was due to COVID.
With COVID.
That's why I was asking, I have no idea how this works.
Have all seven of you guys get up here.
Thank you.
Ceremony, do your hair, but you should do it.
Sure.
Photo op, you have your kids come and. Yeah.
Anything else that, I probably shouldn't make it too wild, that first one, huh?
Is it going to follow a traditional organizational meeting structure? The January 12th meeting? This is a cow. This is a cow, the organizational meeting is two weeks later.
So you'll have officer elect, or discussions about officers?
So to-
You'll talk about committees that we're on, and, and how we allocate in the community.
To Jennifer's point, I think it was Jennifer, Siva and Paul, with regard to the organizational meeting and goal setting, should we work, try to discuss that ahead of time with Michelle in some fashion?
I agree.
The MASB has an excellent template for an organizational meeting, start to finish. Just, I highly recommend reviewing it.
And I think Rebecca has video on that.
Rebecca probably has it.
And also, next Wednesday, Oakland County School Board Association has, is having an indoctrination session for new board members. So hopefully, I, I think we have some of the new board members going to that, two of them, okay?
Sorry, I was having, was there anything that wanted, that needed to be added, or Howard, did I miss something that you said? I apologize if I did.
Sorry.
Just talking about there are, through Oakland County, not only the MASB organizational meeting class that Rebecca has commissioned for us, but also next Wednesday is the Oakland County School Board Association New Board Member Orientation Meeting. So a lot of this onboarding stuff will be happening there. But again, that's, onboarding is administrations, you know, they can do piece, but then you guys are doing, hopefully, I mean, have you guys assigned mentors to the new board members?
We have not.
They can take the 101 class, too, once they're sworn in.
I think that would be very helpful to have a go-to person for each one of the new board members.
Okay. All set. Call for adjournment. Thanks for being here, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for coming, Natalie.